I'm going to call the regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council for the City of Dunsmere to order at 6:00 PM this February the 20th, 2020. We will now stand for the flag salute. I know it's your hand, too.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
May he be, sir.
Julie, when you're ready, we'll now move into the call.
No call.
Councilor George.
Here.
Councilor Governor Brown is here, and now the student, Councilor Kaiser.
Here.
Here.
And everybody. Perfect, thank you. Well, now moving to item number three of our addenda with special presentations, and we have Sheriff Wilkie here today with us for the annual sheriff's report. So Sheriff Wilkie, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. You're welcome, sir. Thank you. All right, Madam Mayor, and the constituents members of the City Council, we have a brief summary of our annual report for 2019. And I have to tell you that I'm very pleased that Sergeant Westine provides outstanding leadership here, and we have Lieutenant Bear Tharzy who's also involved, a field lieutenant, and Captain Carl Hauptman is with me from my left and your right. Just great leaders and doing a great job here. What we thought we'd do is just go through some of the statistics that you might be interested in, and then some of the major cases, and then entertain any questions you might have. And again, these are summaries, and I also have copies that I'll give you if you want a copy of what I'm going to summarize for you. First of all, we are pleased and honored to participate in various 2019 special events for Dunsmere, and we always enjoy that, but includes the Railroad Days Parade, Homecoming Parade, First Annual Steampunk Event, Brew Fest, and other events. So that's a big priority, of course, because we have a big influx of people coming into town. It's always nice to have that security, that extra level of security to give everybody that in that comfort zone perspective, so they have more fun and spend more money.
There you go.
Some of the significant cases, you know, Dunsmere's a great city, but I can tell you that all nine municipalities and many communities in Siskiyou County, you know, are struggling right now. Generally speaking, rural counties are experiencing an upsurge in violent crime. Mental health issues are a major challenge for law enforcement all over the state, and I think probably the issues are even more profound in rural counties. And certainly, we're plagued with, you know, petty type crimes, you know, the property type crimes, and certainly homelessness is a growing problem, you know, in Dunsmere and every community in Siskiyou County. We just had our point in time count, and I believe that was up about 315 to 320 or something like that. So, yes.
Dunsmere is hovering at six. We got six total that were identified during the point in time.
Right, and we appreciate your participation and feedback on that. But wherever they are, that usually poses, you know, challenges for us, and we try to plug those people. Our philosophy here is to transition people out of homelessness and, you know, meet their needs, whether it's housing, or it's mental health care counseling, substance abuse, you know, treatment is often, you know, applicable. So we try to do that. We try to plug them in to those services that they need. So, and also your Family Resource Center, Steve, and the Dunsmere, I think, is being very proactive, and you can be proud of what Dunsmere is doing. Of course, we have outstanding leadership from our supervisor, Ed Balasuela, very supportive of law enforcement, very proactive, and he's a great proponent and supporter of Dunsmere. And I see that in every meeting that we have with the Board of Supervisors, and sometimes outside the, those chambers as well. Some of the significant cases, January last year, we had a sexual assault. It's an ongoing investigation on sex crimes that occurred several years ago. The suspect has been identified, we're attempting to locate him. So, you know, we do have serious crimes that occur even in nice communities like Dunsmere. Residential burglary, 1/28/19, occurred in the 4100 block in Dunsmere Ave. About $30,000 in property was stolen. Through the investigation and the leads, we developed a suspect, a man by the name of Graves. We conducted a search warrant operation at a local residence where we recovered a lot of the property. We were able to track down another location where other property was located. The team did a really good job on that. And most of the stolen property was recovered, and unfortunately, Mr. Graves was arrested and convicted for the crime. But a lot of times when people offend, a lot of times it's alcohol and drug related, and believe it or not, Iowa County is very proactive in helping get people treatment, and a lot of times they get their help they need when they're in the jail system. We had a pretty major drug arrest on 1st of February. Felony warrant suspect was observed at the Chevron Station. When contacted, arrested for the warrant, a marble-sized 3.8 grams of heroin and a golf ball-sized about seven grams of methamphetamine were found. I could tell you right now that throughout the county, we're having a serious problem with drugs, causing most of the crime problems. Meth is making a huge comeback because it's potent and cheap, primarily coming in from Mexico. It's really very prevalent here. We're starting to see a lot of opioids, heroin, fentanyl. Fentanyl is about 50 times more potent than morphine, so we're seeing a lot of that. We're seeing some cocaine. Prescription drugs are a big issue, but we're doing a lot of proactive things, like example, we participated in the Siskiyou Against RX Addiction. And doctors, pharmacists, law enforcement, nurse practitioners, and again, the physicians are doing a great job trying to minimize those issues. We've issued Narcan, naloxone, an antidote to all law enforcement agencies within Siskiyou County, so if we encounter someone under the influence of heroin, we can save their lives. We've saved a few lives, and we've also provided that to many fire departments. So we're being proactive, and the pharmacists and doctors, the hospitals are all on board. I think we're being pretty proactive in that regard. Again, our Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Balasuela is very supportive of all those efforts. We made another drug arrest on 8th February. Felony warrant suspect was located in Dunsmere upon searching, gets sent to arrest, found several grams of methamphetamine and some grams of heroin on him. Suspect was arrested and booked on drug charges. We also, unfortunately, in March of last year, we had a sexual assault involving a minor. The suspect was located, interviewed, he confessed and was booked for sex crimes and convicted, and he was sentenced to prison. We had another sexual assault in August, on the 3rd. Sexual assault involved cruelly against a female juvenile. A suspect was located, interviewed, he confessed, and was booked for several sex-related charges. He was convicted. We had a commercial burglary on November 14th at the Cornerstone, you probably remember that. A suspect was identified through investigative leads, a suspect, Lamont Brown, who was in custody, was booked for this burglary. And again, Sergeant Westine and the team did a great job investigating that. This suspect is a very troubled young man, was previously involved in other burglaries in Dunsmere, including the Yaps a few years back. And he was arrested, I just heard from the district attorney, John Quinn, called me a couple of days ago, said he was convicted of this offense, and it looks like he's going to prison for 10 years. It's sad that he has to go to prison for so long, but the good news is he could get some help when he's in prison with his drug-related challenges. The major case convictions that occurred in 2019, Kyle Rose was sentenced to nine years in prison for attempted murder and arson for the December 22nd, 2018 arson fire.
Long Island.
Yes, sir. That occurred, and Ben Osborne was sentenced to 12 years in prison for the Christmas burglary to Harley's Antiques and other felonies. Also, one of your City Council members helped us track down a recent incident that occurred in Dunsmere where we recovered components of two illegal drug labs in the city. And our great City Councilman, Abe Keister, always looking out for the citizens out there called us. And we started, then Westine got on that case, and Scotty Stock, one of our deputies, actually arrested the suspect for possessing those drug lab components. That was Forrest Kirk. So that was good news, he was arrested for that. Just to give you a few, a little bit more information about some of the calls that we typically get in Dunsmere during any given year. Last year, we had 53 alarm calls, 16 assault and batteries, three assault with a deadly We had four auto thefts, 19 burglaries. We had 24 child abuse calls. Unfortunately, child abuse and domestic abuse are two problems that we just cannot shake in this county, but we're trying. We had 10 dead body cases. We had 153 disturbing the peace-related calls, 22 domestic violence calls, five drunk in publics, four drunk drivers, and elder abuse. We had 68 fish and game violations, 16 forgeries, 10 grand thefts. We had eight mental health care calls. We investigated 51 felonies and 27 misdemeanor other offenses. We respond to hundreds of other calls, noncriminal calls, 132 contact suspects, you know, we're acting suspiciously. 37 petty theft calls. We conducted 19 probation searches, responded to three prowler calls, three runaway calls, six scams. We're getting a lot more of these scams, especially victimizing the elderly. I'm really proud of the team. They conducted 196 school security checks. We've asked all our deputies, even though we're shorthanded, to visit the schools as often as possible to enhance the security of our schools and to provide that presence and that deterrence. We conducted 235 other security checks, primarily the businesses in the city. We investigated eight sexual offenses. We served 41 subpoenas. We had 11 suicide or attempted suicides. Unfortunately, the county is seeing an upsurge in suicides. We had 17 suicides last year, and it's almost double from the previous year, 2018. And most of those, there's a drug or alcohol component. I would say meth, opioids, THC from marijuana, and alcohol are the most common drugs that are associated with these tragic suicides. Fortunately, even though we had 11 calls in Dunsmere, most of the time, we're able to intervene and prevent these suicides from occurring. That's the good news. But we still have too many suicides. We had, let me see, 22 traffic accidents, 85 traffic-related issues, 47 traffic stops, 14 trespass calls, 165 vandalism. Oh, that's a lot. 92 vehicle stops, other vehicle stops, and 12 calls related to juveniles, and we served 12 warrants. Now, I have a copy of this, I'll give the City Council the copy of all this information, and if you need any additional info, please contact Ben or one of us, and we'll be happy to accommodate it. I just wanted to tell you that it's a distinct honor and privilege providing law enforcement services for the City of Dunsmere, and the leadership and all the city workers and the citizens are just extraordinary, and we really enjoy it and we appreciate all the support you provide. It makes our job very, very easy. And again, I got to give the credit to Sergeant Westine who down here primarily, yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, clarifying questions and a statement. Sir, you had said 10 dead bodies. Is that done, sir?
Those are dead body calls.
Okay, and you said 11 suicides. Is that done, sir?
No, the suicides are 17 suicides countywide.
Countywide?
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, Dunsmere, a lot of these crime-related problems or these tragedies that occur, you know, Dunsmere's kind of on the lower spectrum. We have a lot of other communities.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, it is, it is, and that means you're doing a lot of positive things. And I think the City Council being proactive, I think our Board of Supervisor representative, I think working with law enforcement so well, we minimize a lot of these issues and problems. And I think Dunsmere is just in a great place right now. And we have many more communities in the county that are definitely more problematic. But really, the drugs are the biggest issue. And a lot of that has to do with the beyond our control, like laws have been passed that have minimized a lot of the drug-related offenses, and we're really seeing just a flood of drugs coming up here from Mexico, because a lot of the cartels are retooling, and they're sending up like fentanyl, they're sending up heroin, they're sending up methamphetamine, and these drugs are very highly addictive. And then there's a lot of medication like Xanax and some of these narcotic analgesics that are a real serious problem. And then, of course, with Prop 64, you know, the market's kind of flooded with marijuana. And cocaine is always a problem, you know, we always, and you have to recognize too, that I-5 is one of the major drug corridors, you know, in the United States, and we have US-97 is a major drug corridor. So you have, you know, we're here, and we're along these major drug corridors, and that kind of precipitates some of the activity as well. But, you know, we have such, you know, your leadership and what you do and your support for law enforcement really helps these issues. You know, I would say we have a great Board of Supervisors, a great CEO, you have a great city manager, and that really helps a lot. It greatly minimizes the problems that we already have. And you have Family Resource Center, where you try to help people. Yes, sir.
I want to commend you for the work that you have done. I have worked with you specifically on this particular case, and I was very impressed at how you guys handled it. And one, how you cleaned house and got the property back to the property owner. That was, to me, was the most imperative thing. I will say that if you rent a property and you get evicted, take your drug app and your drugs with you. Don't leave them behind for me to clean up, because I got no choice but to call Ben. And Ben, I want to thank you, you know, I hope I never have to do this again with you, but the way you handle it, I commend you, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the fact that you guys, you know, regardless, you went outside agencies and you got the help that you need to make sure that the homeowner got her home back clean and everything was gone. Great job. And as far as support from our county supervisor, I appreciate everything that man does for us. Talking about Ed Balasuela, and Ed, I'm telling you personally, when the time comes coming up, you got my vote, sir.
You guys also all work for you.
Thank you for your support for the City of Dunsmere.
Thank you.
All right? That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. And Ed Balasuela always supports Dunsmere, and Dunsmere is a big priority. We've got Captain Hauptman and Lieutenant Bear Tharzy and Sergeant Westine, you're a big priority for us, and Ed's always something where you believe in. And he's a great advocate for law enforcement and his constituents down here. We really appreciate him too, so. And thank you very much for the.
One moment. Councilor George, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Sergeant, sure, two things. First of all, I would like to really state how impressed I am with the flow of police chiefs that's down here. I remember working with Sergeant Reeves and then Sergeant Merrill, and I believe that now in Sergeant Westine, we have a real winner, and I couldn't be more happy with the support that he's providing. The second thing I wanted to bring up is, I've understood in talking with both the city manager and the mayor, that we have a particular problem here in the area with child abuse. And one of the things that I was wondering is if, I know that on one hand, the resource centers are working to try and address that, and I know from what you can do that you're addressing that. Is there some way of getting together with the, I'm a member of the Siskiyou County Resource Collaborative, which deals with all of those. Is there some way you can get together with that board and develop maybe a way of working together between the Sheriff's Department and the resource centers to help address that particular problem of child abuse?
Yes, and I know that this is a problem throughout the county, but perhaps we should revisit this issue, maybe with, in partnership with the Family Resource Center. Now, I just saw, you know, Michelle up in Moirica, we attended a meeting, and maybe we should figure out some ways to mitigate this issue.
Hell, yeah, we should.
Right, but another component to this is, you know, you've got great schools here, and you've got great administrators, guys of great color, but what these community care meetings you have are very essential. And one thing that's pretty obvious is the teachers and administrators know who some of these vulnerable kids are, because believe it or not, you have homeless kids in Dunsmere. And I think one of the things that the Board of Supervisors and we grapple with is just the poverty level in Siskiyou County. It ranges from 17 to 30 percent, depending on whether you're talking about individuals or families. And when you have kids that have one parent, and maybe that parent's working, or their parent is struggling with some type of substance abuse issue, that's why we have like the backpack program that Rotary is involved in. You know, some of the kids don't even have enough food to eat, but Dunsmere and, you know, private organizations in the city risen to the occasion to help these kids. But I think more can be done and more should be done, especially as we review these annual statistics that tell us that we have a challenge that we can meet and perhaps significantly mitigate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one last quick thing, and I know we need to move on with the agenda, but I really just want to thank you guys and really reiterate that I work really closely with Sergeant Westine, and he's professional and responsible, and I couldn't ask for anything more. So thanks, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you for the support.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Councilor George, do you have any question?
Well, a comment and then two questions. The comment is, is Dunsmere strives to survive. We're trying to engage with our citizens on the full spectrum of public services, including public safety. So the Vice Mayor chairs our Finance Committee, I'm the Vice Chairman of the committee, who was on my watch with Carl 10 years ago, that we cut a complete deputy position out of our budget. And I've worried about it ever since then. Does that make the community of Dunsmere less safe? And our Vice Chair in Finance, we cut a half deputy position, because our general fund is threatened. But the mayor has taken the initiative, we're going to do a visioning process, we're going to put a flyer in every utility envelope asking a number of questions about public services. Do you feel safe? And I simply want to say, I hope this is a dialogue that we have with the notion, we get extraordinarily good deal from the sheriff's office, but have we got too much? That's the comment. The question one is, we're very much focused on fire safety, green waste disposal. Ed Balasuela has made this one of his initiatives, should he get reelected. I'm up Dunsmere to be a part of that. As a low-income rural community, are there any labor resources for the sum of those that need to make up to Siskiyou County and their communities that there is a labor? I've heard of various camps and various work release programs. Is that a possibility or no?
Yes, we have, well, for example, we have alternate sentencing programs up in Moirica where, because our jails are full. So people that, like, especially low-risk offenders, who will put in alternate sentencing programs where they get education, treatment, counseling, and sometimes they do projects. They could do cleanup projects and things of that nature, and we could, you know, they have been down here in Dunsmere. Also, one thing I didn't mention is, we have reactivated a couple of years ago with support of the Board of Supervisors and Behavioral Health Services, our DARE program, the Drug Awareness Resistance Education. And we've been in the schools, and it's an evidence-based program that is much more effective than the previous DARE. And that's how, you know, we're reaching the kids. And it's not just drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, it's things like stranger danger, it's anti-bullying, it's, you know, gun safety, things like that, that they can really use, and that helps us tremendously. But I think that this community care organization could be a real catalyst for addressing a lot of these issues, because it's multidisciplinary in nature, and I think we get a lot done, we'll keep that going, and we get, maybe identify a couple other community members or key people that can participate, because everybody brings something to the table that's very valuable.
And finally, I really salute you as a veteran for your support of veterans, and I think the City of Dunsmere needs to do better. So as we plan for Veterans Day 2020, I hope we do have a small parade, I hope we have another ceremony at the cemetery, and I simply thank you for your advocacy and generosity around that issue.
Thank you very much, and I can tell you that we're here for you, and we love to participate in any veterans' events. And we actually supervise, I supervise the Veteran Service Office that the Board of Supervisors actually expanded, and we've been here, you know, with a new flagpole, and we'll be here for you, and we love that. And Dunsmere is a very patriotic community, you have a lot of veterans here, so we look forward to that. Thank you for that recognition. And we salute you too, and all of you for all your support, and get ahold of us if you need something.
Well, now that you said that, we could use a new flagpole, one of the weatherproof flags at the cemetery for that new flagpole.
I'll give you.
Just a second. Okay, all right, thank you.
Just a second. One last quick question.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you again for all of your work here. We appreciate that. I do have concerns similar to the discussion with Councilmember Deutsch on domestic abuse, child abuse, and the sexual violence that you've talked about in the community. As someone who has experienced those things, it's very close to me that we work harder to addressing those issues. My understanding is, is you pushed the Board of Supervisors to declare states of emergency for issues in law enforcement, specifically for drug trafficking on Interstate 5, and I'm wondering if there are other avenues for us to look into mental health and abuse cases and sexual violence states of emergency as well? That's something that's warranted for our area, to get better mental health as well as counseling and services for individuals who suffer from these types of crimes.
I think anything we could do proactively would be very beneficial, and it's a partnership. And we've got a lot of people, you know, we have the county, we have the city, we have the law enforcement, we have many people that want to help. And let's work together, identify, public health is a huge component. Another thing is, I think it may be a good idea for me to go back and look at these, like the child abuse calls, and drill down and determine what kind, get more detail for you, so that we could focus our efforts more specifically.
I just think in my experience, there are lots of programs we can be looking at, investing our time and resources towards that, lower these levels. These are types of crimes where victims don't fully recover.
Right.
It takes a lot of time. So, you know, I hope in the next year, we can come back and have an annual report for me next year about what we've done to tackle these types of things.
Madam Mayor, that's a great suggestion, and we'll keep working on it, and.
I'll be in touch with you about the Resource Collaborative, maybe we can get together and bring some stakeholders together, put the schools. and bring some stakeholders together, put the schools and everyone and just talk for me to look at it. Oh, thank you, ma'am, mayor, for bringing that up.
Yeah, great idea. Let's be proactive, get it done. Thank you, ma'am, mayor. Thank you.
All right, we'll now move into item number four, which is our time for general public comments and this is the time for individuals to give comments either on our special presentation which we just had, which thank you again for your time with us, Sheriff Loki, anything that is not on the agenda or anything that is on our consent agenda. And just to review quickly, our consent agenda includes SB1 funding resolution, project list, local transportation fund, claim form, check register, and fire engine swap. Those are the items on our consent agenda. If you'd like to comment about those, items not on the agenda or special presentation, please, you have three minutes now. Good?
Tim Holt. First of all, I want to thank Sheriff Loki, he didn't mention it, but he is supporting progress on the Mossbraid Trail.
Oh, yes, sir.
On safety grounds and hopefully that'll help that, keep that project moving forward. I've stood here quite a few times to speak on behalf of our library, as you know, to encourage the city to support it with funds from the sales tax increase measure passed by Dunsborough voters a few years ago. Thus far, I feel the city has been pretty fair in its allocation of Measure P funds to the library. But it's become apparent to me after a recent meeting I had at City Hall that my advocacy on this very important matter of library funding is subject to misinterpretation. So, let me be clear, those of you who were in town when Measure P, the sales tax increase, was passed, understand that it was in fact passed because of a concerted door-to-door effort by library supporters to get it passed and that the city's voters went to the polls with the understanding that Measure P was on the ballot to support the library and our community pool. Show and tell here, this is something that was sent out to all Dunsborough voters, save the Dunsborough pool, support our library, a yes vote on Measure P will help keep the Dunsborough pool open and support the operations of the Dunsborough library. Here's the tricky part, it is also true that Measure P is a general tax, not a dedicated tax, and that its revenues go into the city's general fund and can be allocated as the city wishes. I've never said anything from this podium to contradict that obvious fact since I, of course, understand the difference between a general tax and a dedicated, a tax dedicated to a specific purpose. So, with that understanding of the legal niceties, there is one other very important consideration, that of keeping faith with the voters of this city by supporting our library with revenues from Measure P. The fact is that you wouldn't have this money to disperse to anybody if the library hadn't faced a funding crisis after the county completely cut off all funding for its branch libraries, motivating library supporters in Dunsborough to get the sales tax increase passed. So, I hope this clarifies my and the library's position on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to give a public comment on items not on the agenda?
Well, Madam Mayor and city council members and all of us present, my name is Rona Macy. Until last month, I was a resident at the Dunsborough Hotel, or Hotel Dunsborough, and what I want to talk about is the sad deterioration of the buildings in this town owned by Mr. Mark Juarez. I've known him for a long time, I used to work with, for him in the Bay Area, and unfortunately, he's a true visionary, I believe that, a man can be a genius, but he doesn't have the ability, the willingness, or the drive, or the finances to make his dreams become a reality. Therefore, things are just getting worse and worse and I know this has been going on a very long time here, I'm a new resident, but I certainly know what's been happening and also in weed, but that has nothing to do with us. My second point is, I was his personal assistant for about six months and I was witness to many lies that this man told in regard to all kinds of business dealings and things like that. And I think it's about time it's just brought out into the open for those of you who don't know, that he is not a professional or honest or reliable person and dealings with him are just a waste of time because anything he says, more than likely, is not true. I am a certified life coach and I specialize in organization and in my professional opinion, Mr. Juarez is a hoarder. I have been in his apartment, I have been in his building and seen all the rooms there and I believe that his buying up of properties both here and in weed is part of his affliction and that he, he just gets things, it gives him some kind of power or whatever it is and he, yes.
What can you continue?
What's it?
For items during the public comment, I appreciate you bringing this up about Mark and his properties.
Right.
But we typically like comments that are within our realm that we can assist with.
Not character assassination, this is the fine line.
It is, it is-
We appreciate it.
Gotcha.
So, if you happen to have a point about what the city of Dunsborough should be doing or anything within our-
Okay, I'm sorry I overstepped my bounds, but I believe the-
I understand.
Right. It's a very emotional topic, yes.
It's also very, yes, very really-
Yes, I believe it would be in the city's interest to really look at the buildings that are historical properties and that could be restored by perhaps another owner or the city, I don't exactly know how that goes, but there is so much potential in these buildings and they're beautiful, they're historical, and they're just going to ruin and if there's anything the city can do about that, I don't know what it is, I would-
We're in the process.
Okay, thank you. And once again, I apologize for that. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to give a general public comment on items not on the agenda, on our consent agenda, or in reference to our special presentation?
And not character assassination.
Norm Davis. And I would also like to address the building situation. I'm going to make it very brief though, as I understand it, today is the second reading, I really hope that for the good of the whole community, that will be passed so it can be implemented and we can have a much more peaceful and beautiful and attractive community. Thank you.
And just for reference to the general public, the second reading is on our old business, so we will open up another opportunity for public comment in relation to our abandoned and distressed building ordinance number five six five. So, there will be another opportunity for that. So, for right now, are there any other general public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
Hi, Paris Patrick, Shasta Avenue. So, I brought up this last week and I just wanted to bring it up again since Todd and Juliana are here. I have noticed that our treasurer does not attend these meetings and I think it would be in the best interest of the city if the treasurer did in fact attend these meetings as I have seen him comment on what happens in the meetings, but he is not actually here. He may speak and then leave, so I just think that that would be a better choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other general public comments on items not on the agenda? Nope, we will do that later.
Okay.
I'll call you guys up for that one. All right, see no other general public comment, I will close that item and move on to item number five, which is council and staff comments, and I will begin with city manager.
I think the only, well, a couple things, lucky to believe. I've spent considerable amount of time down at Caltrans over the last two weeks trying to work on, well, work with Caltrans on the redecking of the eight-hundred-foot bridge. We have our water supply running underneath that deck and there is a section that's in dispute and Caltrans is claiming that it's our ownership and it could end up being a three million dollar bill. Yes, but in testifying down there and taking through historical records and having some folks down there that have been really helpful to our cause, I think that I'm ninety-five percent sure that we're in the clear. The only thing that we may face down the road, and this gets a little bit arcane, is there's a formula on the books, it's old, that says, there's a formula, the functional lifespan of that bridge versus how old it is, so, you know, that basically is a one-to-one relationship, times what it costs to build that section of the bridge, which is twenty thousand dollars, we're on the hook for. So, we might need to file a, you know, a insurance claim for twenty thousand dollars down the road, four, three, four, five years down the road, but we're still fighting that and working that out. That's, that's one. The other is the Butterfly Bridge, we got Caltrans to finally release the money and I'm working with Jacobs on a scope and trying to get up, preliminary engineering is starting and, you know, we should hit our deadline in getting that constructed. We've got five years, maybe we lost a year and a half in the process up to now. So, but we're moving, the money's flowing and so we're moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions for city staff? All right, council member Deutsch, comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. One of the things I'd like to discuss because I've been feeling this for a while is, is that having been involved with the council after over forty years, it starts to me that most people don't realize the real challenge that we face as a city because of the size of our office staff. When we look at doing anything on the agenda, anything that's going to take any kind of a staff report, it really basically comes down to one person, Todd Yevas. And anything that any of the council members expect to be done has to be filtered through an office staff. We do have finance, obviously, we do have Julie there, but in terms of really going out and taking on any kind of a challenge, any kind of a project, any kind of an assignment for the council for the agenda, it goes all to one person. And if you look at Mount Shasta, for instance, they have more people, but just in terms of running the city, how many people are there? Probably about fifteen people in the office, ten to fifteen?
Yeah, about fifteen to eighteen.
Yeah, and we have two, if you will, and three, if you will. So, the point I want to make is, is that I hope people realize that when we're dealing with the city manager in Dunsborough, we've been blessed three out of the four times, if you will, and the point is, is that we're blessed right now. The feedback I'm getting from all around, from everybody that's had any kind of contact with Mr. Yevas has been exemplary. Everywhere I look, everyone I talk to is really impressed and I just want you all to realize that the work that he puts in and what he does for the city, just like Mark did before and Randy did before that, is really something that's extraordinary and we take for granted. When we look at the difference between Mount Shasta and Dunsborough, it really puts the focus on one person, I just want to compliment him for the work he's been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obviously, I want to move on from this, but we have, we have a lot of dedicated staff that work extremely hard, I just want to add that.
Yeah, I didn't want to take away from them, but I wanted to point out the particular challenge you have.
Councilmember, is there any comments or comments?
Yeah, I want to hold back and again publicly commend Sheriff and acknowledge the fact that this council member appreciates what you guys do for the city. You know, we're, we're here doing, okay, we do negotiations, we're writing your checks, but we see what you're doing and we have to work every damn thing, so thank you. I didn't realize that we had a problem such about the domestic violence, the child abuse. I commend you, ma'am, mayor, for putting that as four for us to be working on this year. I want to be part of and volunteer anything I can, I'd like to be part of that coalition. I feel that Paris has a valid point as far as our treasurer, one, he comes and makes comments, but he should be available for questions, especially if there's money or things where the treasurer could be questioned. He's the only one out of all of us that's got a paycheck, so I think that he should be available at meetings, that's my opinion, sorry, Mario.
Don't say sorry, we have to be there and not get anything.
Yeah, you know what they call it, the stipend?
Stipend.
Stipend. Anyway, just so everybody knows, I'll be knocking on your door, the Rotary Golf Tournament is coming up and I'll be hitting you up, you're looking for the sign out there to advocate yourself, your business, your mom's birthday, whatever, it's a good way and all the money goes for our kids for, for you get, for call back back. No, for the, it goes for the backpack program and it goes for, what do you mean, for college here, what?
Scholarship.
Scholarship. So, it all goes for our kids, so-
What's the date for the tournament?
I don't know yet, then, what's the date of the tournament?
The April twenty-fifth.
It'll be April twenty-fifth, it's at the weed golf tournament, golf, beautiful, beautiful place.
Lake Shastina, not weed.
Lake Shastina.
There is a difference.
Yes.
Lake Shastina.
Lake Shastina.
Okay, that's the one where we had before with all the ducks and then, they got ducks and deer and probably golf carts and just like to pay you away for the duck penalty and make shots, so it's really cool. And of course, they invite y'all to come out, it's for the kids, so come out and have a listen, support the Rotary Golf. And then last, I want to commend Mr. Keith Cool, the owner of the grocery store and all the people that work at that store. He's had the employees, family members, everybody out there busting, working really hard and it's supposed to be open at the end of, at the end of the month, if we're living there, it's like running a store.
Okay.
So, I appreciate the fact that, do you realize, this man's losing over a thousand dollars a day to make something right. I give him props. Thank you, ma'am, mayor.
Thank you, council member Esso. Council member Art, comments or questions?
Well, my first comment is, I'm glad the mayor is with us, she attended a meeting with me last week and she was on death's door, some sort of flu bug, and she wrote down the date for the Rotary Golf Tournament, if the city council wants to have a foursome, if Big Dave plays, I'm in.
I've never golfed, it would turn into a small comedy show.
Are you not allowed at all the golf or golf clubs, just sort of?
In terms, I have three items and two of them relate to Tim Holt, who's in the audience. Tim is the chair of the group of former winners of the Citizen of the Year Award and the Alexander Dunsborough Award and we have already been meeting with the goal of the 2020 version of the award ceremony, which will embrace the Business of the Year, the Alexander Dunsborough Award, and the Citizen of the Year, that will be May sixteenth at the community center, Rotary providing a full bar, I hope all the members of the city council attend. The second item is, there will be, and this sort of relates to one of our agenda items, a chamber mixer next week, February twenty-sixth, Mossbraid Hotel in the evening. This is the effort in no small part of Cindy Foreman, dedicated community member to try to rebuild our chamber and again, I hope you all come. The third is, sort of going back to the city manager and staff, Tim Holt asked me a while ago, whatever happened to the report back on Children's Park? And I think that is pretty close to do and owing with the notion for any number of residents, it's a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I would be very brief today, as council member Art has said, I was sick last week, it's going around, council member Brian is also sick this week, so wash your hands, drink your vitamin C, take your vitamins, it's still kind of processing through me. I'm still trying to work with UU Pacific and the Trail Association on Mossbraid and trying to get a meeting set up with them. They were very responsive for about a week and a half and now they don't want to talk to us anymore, so I'm not sure what's going on there, so I've been still trying to work with them, trying to get in contact with them on a weekly basis, probably just going to have to show up in Sacramento.
That's what I guess would-
It'll bother the hell out of me.
Could the sheriff arrest them on some?
Yeah.
I don't know.
We sent them a letter, ma'am, mayor, excuse me for mentioning, we sent them a letter for working with Trail Association, they committed to be with us in Dunsborough.
That's what I'm going.
They did, yeah, they did the same thing for us too, but we haven't been able to give a date.
Now, we've got tickets, you know.
Yeah.
Right, I'll make some- Right, I'll make some calls.
We appreciate that.
It's a serious public, so you gotta.
So, thank you. Yeah, I think anyone, I think at this point, the Trail Association, myself, are also just trying to pester them as much as possible to get them up here, because they were going to come up for a stakeholder meeting in January, it's now February, so we're working on that. I have been meeting with Ed Kamenoff from J.F. Shaden's on the Governor's Task Force for affordable housing, discussing some of the issues that rural communities have. We're trying to reach their affordable housing numbers, and that's going really well. In the next couple of weeks, I'll be having a couple of other meetings with the task members to continue to talk about some of the things we deal with, which is trying to afford our infrastructure upgrades, trying to afford infrastructure to unincorporated areas, because that's really what they want to see. They said, well, why aren't you pushing water and sewer to all these unincorporated areas? And I said, we can't even afford the stuff that we have. So, we're, we're continuing to work on that, and hopefully that will bring some kind of funding source to our area to help kind of stimulate the housing production. Talking with Rico, SB 2 funding should be approved here soon.
It has been.
It has.
It has been.
So, the SB 2 funding for housing planning is coming through, and so that's, that's really great, so we're going to be working on housing quite a bit. We have completed the survey for the priorities envisioning for Dunsmere, so it will be going out, I believe, in the March bills. So, those will be available through your March utility bill. If you need any extras, we'll have some at City Hall in paper format, and I believe we're going to be putting them on the website as well.
I can show that, I'm over the helm right now.
Great, yes, that's great. So, please take that for us, it's going to give you, give us a lot of information on the priorities residents have for spending, so that's, please promote that and have people in your household take those. Every person can take it, so you'll only get one in your bill, but if you have extra people, again, we will have extras for you to take and give input back to us on that. That's going to be very important coming up here.
And Mayor?
Yes.
I could also recommend that anybody that is hearing this, let their neighbors and friends know, so they're aware that it's going to be in the bill and look for it.
Thank you. I think that's all that I can remember right now, but we will move on, so thank you. Well, now moving to item number six, which is committee reports. Councilmember Art, have you had a finance committee meeting since the last city council meeting?
We did, and I don't know if the report was better given by the city manager, the finance director, whatever your pleasure.
I'll just mention the auditor presented, the finance committee did accept the audit, and they were going to recommend the city council accept the audit, but I'll let, you know, Chair of the committee make a report, I think he has some other pieces that he wants to mention, but just FYI, the audit was accepted by the finance committee.
Thank you. And we'll start the last committee.
Well, no, no, the, the comment I will make is, I obviously urge every member of the city council to read the audit report, because we're not a committee.
And so, we'll have a future agenda item to discuss at the city council, so, thank you. Any other committee reports?
The only other one I have is I will be going to McLeod tomorrow as a representative of the city for the Regional Water Action Group. There are two issues of import to the city, one I'll talk about later when we talk about the wastewater 3 operator. The first issue, of course, is the status of our request to the state of California for grant funds to significantly upgrade the moss braiding intake works, and hopefully that is in good shape, and the recommendation of the R-LAG is that Dunsmere be funded for this entire project. And the other item, of course, is there is a study done by Paul Rose out of the Truckee Public Service District that proposes we share with Mount Chaska the cost of a wastewater 3 operator, so we can talk about that more when we get to that item.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Just pointing out that the airport committee will be meeting, we're signing up to date, we'll take care of that, it'll be an evening meeting, so that people, pilots and et cetera can attend.
Wait, and just, just on that point, we spent two hours last night in finance, and our independent auditor, Charlie, went through his findings and some minor problems in the city's finances, and then he said, would you like to talk about the elephant in the room? And the elephant in the room is the airport. So, in both the last auditor's report and this auditor's report, he has pointed out how large a liability our airport is to the general fund.
We'll be discussing that, and then hoping we may have another date when it's on the schedule. All right, any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number seven, which is approval of the minutes for January 30th, 2020.
I made a motion to approve the minutes for January 30th, 2020, and February 6th, 2020.
We'll have to do them separately, since I will have to abstain from February 6th. So, we will move into, there's a motion for approval for the January 30th.
January 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll give the second to Councilmember Art. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into vote. All those in favor of approving the January 30th, 2020 minutes, please signify by saying aye. All right, oppose, extension, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for February 6th, 2020.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
I'll take this one.
All right, second by Councilmember Deutsch. Is there any discussion on the motion at hand, Councilmember Art?
Well, two things. One is to compliment Julie on the excellent job she does taking the minutes for this meeting.
Here, here.
And in the minutes for the meeting, the floor is future agenda items, a couple of them seem to have been recognized, I'm looking at page nine of our agenda packet, but I specifically am concerned about the management of the historic district. I raised it, I received a second from Councilmember Teisler, and do I need to raise it again tonight? Is it longer being considered?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, so the, the historic district has a lot going on with it, digging through some of the historic records and then looking at the state registry records, and so it's, it's a lot more involved than just coming back with an easy report, so I want to get as much information on it as possible. It turns out that there was a lot of things that have not been up kept, and there's a lot of things that were done at the beginning of it that we'll have to rectify, so I'm, I'm working on it and getting some information from the state to make sure that we can qualify for funding as well as we properly registered.
I mean, I thought I heard from the city manager, based on his background, we need to have some sort of an oversight group, that is part of the deal.
You need to have a lot of things.
As a legal district, and, and I don't know what that goes.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's on the future agenda items, I've just been putting together the information of what needs to be done, what has been done, so that we have a full picture of what needs to happen with that.
Thank you.
Okay, it's on.
Glad to be a witness to the conversation that went on with that regard, it's a lot deeper than just a quick solution.
Yeah, there's a, there's, there is, basically what happened when it got put together, a bunch of things were not considered, so we're going to have to do quite a bit of work to get that up and running and properly done. So, it, it is still coming, working on that. So, any other comments on the minutes? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Kaiser and Councilmember Deutsch. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, I will abstain since I was absent, motion carries. We'll now move into item number eight, which is our consent agenda. Tonight, we have item number 8A, which is SB 1 funding resolution project list, 8B, local transportation fund, plane form, item C, check register for February 1st, 2020 through the 7th, and D, fire engine swap. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
No, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
All right, in full?
Say full.
And there's a second by Councilmember Deutsch. Any discussion on the consent agenda, Councilmember Art?
Well, I am looking at page 12 of the agenda packet, the second page of Resolution 2020 XX, and as you know, I'm sort of concerned with the state of sidewalks in Dunsmere. But what I see for Project 1 asphalt crack sealing and Project 2 sidewalk repairs, scheduled for completion, we're giving 2019 dates. Why are we doing that?
So, that's prior projects that are already on the project list, that we're just keeping on the project list in case council decides to allocate SB 1 funds for those projects.
So, there's a project that didn't get done.
Well, or we, I mean, we did do, there were, there was allocations toward those sidewalks with SB 1 funds, and we can continue to do that if council so desires. The main point of the resolution is the current proj, or a new project, so we're now establishing three total projects.
Do you have any other?
Yeah, no, let me add something to that too, so, yeah, I think for, oh, a number of years now, we haven't been submitting projects and advocating well enough for transportation projects. So, I've met with local transportation fund folks, they have the dates, working on a cost estimate for a, two different packages of projects that include sidewalks, ADA, et cetera, that are sprinkled around the community, so it doesn't look like we're favoring one area or another, so then we can bring those cost estimates and, and lay it at the, whether it be at the state level or at the county level, to say, these are the things that we need to get funded, and we have been skipped over for a number of years, so it's in the works.
Thank you. So, consent agenda items typically are not open for discussion. If you'd like to hold this as a new agenda item to amend it, you can. All right, any other discussion on the motion at hand, which is to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8B? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving consent agenda items 8A, B, C, and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, public hearings, we have none scheduled for today, so we'll move into item number 10, which is old business, which is the second reading of the abandoned and distressed building ordinance, ordinance number 565. City Manager Yvas.
So, second reading of distressed building ordinance, essentially, as you all know, we have a number of long-term vacant commercial properties that are in disrepair, and we are not seeing any movement in terms of getting them up to code or getting tenants into them, and so what we are doing is creating the registry for commercial and residential buildings that have been vacant for six months or more, and there are a lot of nuances to this, but essentially, the point is to move folks with commercial and residential properties that are in disrepair and are underutilized to either improve their properties and work towards getting some monetary economic development happening in the commercial district, or to do something about distressed residential properties. And so, over a period of time, if no work is done on these properties, then the, the registration fees and fines increase substantially.
And were there any amendments from the first reading to the second reading?
No.
All right, great. Any clarifying questions for city staff at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Anyone who would like to give public comment on this item can please come up to the podium, please state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Tina Fava, I live in Dunsmere. I am for the new ordinance of the abandoned and distressed properties, especially in the downtown historic district. I was sold a dream, as many of us have been, on these properties, and since 2013, I have seen zero progress, in fact, I've seen them just become worse and worse and worse, and I've seen many rounds of it all. I'm sure all of us have, so I implore you to put this ordinance into effect as soon as possible.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to give public comment on this item?
I am Carol Cedar Street. I am also expressing my support for this ordinance as a business owner who would really like to see more other businesses being able to open up and economy here improving and retaining more time, like when people come to visit, they don't have much to keep them here for very long hours, and so all of the businesses are suffering because a few bad players don't want to open up their businesses. And also, I wanted to say, commend Julie on all the hard work you do, and we're going to miss you a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment?
Paris Patrick, Chasta Avenue. As a property owner here in Dunsmere, I find it to be incredibly important that our buildings downtown are thriving. It's an embarrassment, and I fully, and my husband too, fully support this ordinance. Thank you.
Are there any?
Settle, settle. Steve Buchelman, homeowner, I fully endorse this ordinance and hope that you pass it very quickly.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Seeing none, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section for the second reading of the abandoned and distressed building ordinance, and we'll now move into discussion.
You know, I'm sorry, I, I did forget to mention something more specific was also that, you know, I, I just want to say something about the theater specifically, and that should, you know, whatever that we're doing here is going to definitely maybe, you know, push some sort of action towards seeing that open again someday in the future, but also feel like that should be the top priority, because if that were open, it would be the gem of the city, the center of the city economy, and would raise everybody's votes. So, I just wanted to put in a special word for the California Theater.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move into discussion on this item. Is there any discussion from the council members? I'm not here at the last meeting, but I can review, and I don't have any.
I don't believe we need to talk about nothing. I have no verdict, so I'm just going to try this. I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 565 in its second reading, an ordinance of the city of Dunsmere, City Council, adding chapter 9.14, abandoned and distressed real property to the Dunsmere Municipal Code by the title of.
Thank you. There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a second by Councilmember Deutsch. Any discussion of the motion at hand? Councilmember Art?
Well, a question to the staff. If the city says yes on second reading and adopts this ordinance, and we now have a code enforcement officer in place, for several witnesses that took the time to tell us how important this is, what will be the implementation schedule for the enforcement of the new ordinance?
So, it's, it's really there, well, we have, like I just mentioned, we have code enforcement officer on, who's here?
Yep.
And so, he needs to pass a quasi law enforcement test that he's scheduled for. As soon as he passes that, then he can start writing citations, and the first thing we do is we start looking at distressed properties, and for code violations, we vigorously write citations, and we ensure that people with distressed properties that are clearly in disrepair are getting into register with our register.
And it takes 30 days for the ordinance to ratify, so in that 30 days that it takes for us to wait for this to go to the paper and become a ratified ordinance, hopefully that will all take, that takes time.
Mayor, when does, when does our code enforcement take this quasi test, and when does he become official?
His name is Mark Allen, and he is here.
Yeah, Mark, when does Mark take this test?
It's March 9th.
March 18th.
March 9th through the 18th.
March 9th through the 18th? March ninth through the eighteen? Damn, really?
That's a class, that's a lot of tests.
Yeah.
Okay.
In my comments in your absence on the first reading, I thanked the city of Weed, I thanked the city manager, the support team, and my concern for our city is we have not conducted an enforcement hearing since I was there 10 or 12 years ago. So our city needs to anticipate when the citations go out, there will be appeals and there will be challenges. Are they going to go to the planning commission? Are they going to go to the city council? Who is going to oversee the hearings? They need to be impartial and fair and effective. So this is all new territory.
Good point.
We'll take care of that at a later date. We've been discussing the enforcement chapters that we need to have.
Good job, everybody.
All right, any other discussion on the motion at hand? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor of approving ordinance five six five by title only, an ordinance of the city of Dunsmere city council, adding chapter nine point one four, abandoned and distressed real property to the Dunsmere municipal code. This is all by saying aye.
Aye. We want to do a roll call just because this is this.
No.
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Aye. I had a aye already.
Abstention, carries.
We think Dunsmere just got some heat, right?
Hopefully. All right, so we'll move on to our next items, which is new business. Because our chair of the finance committee is not here and council member Brian had a special interest in the item number 11C, which is discussion and possible action of the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce, and also item 11F, which is revisiting the 2019, 2020 budget goals and objectives.
I'd like to add one more to that, item B.
The review of committee appointments?
Cause she's not here, a bunch of like ways on the issue.
Okay. Would the council members be amicable to moving items B, C, and F to our next meeting so that council member Brian is available to discuss those items?
I would concur with that assessment. So I'll move in, you want a second?
Well, wait, council member Arf, do you have any issues with that?
Ironically, for the council members in your absence, it was a very high priority, including council member Kaiser, we're not getting John. So particularly because if I'm able to sat through this meeting, I would like to have an ad hoc committee on regional green waste solutions.
So we're not discussing green waste at this time. The items that we're discussing, tabled into another meeting is review of committee appointments, discussion of possible action of the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce, and the revisit of the 1920 budget goals and objectives.
I'm not in favor of table 11B.
11B, the review of committee appointments, okay. But you are amicable to items C and that point to the next meeting.
Yes, because I thank the vice mayor, Julie Nury. And I would simply note, we don't even have the budget goals and objectives in our agenda package.
Thank you. Yeah, I know he wanted to discuss that as a last in addition, so it was more than tight for that.
How are we going to review? I disagree with you, Peter. We're going to talk about the committee appointments, but he's not here.
But we can discuss them.
Well, this isn't going to be a one-meeting discussion.
Okay. But we are all amicable to moving items 11C and 11F to the next meeting, so I will go ahead and table those to the next meeting and Julie, please make a note for that. Thank you. So we will keep items A, B, and E, since we are not unanimous in tabling those. So we'll move on to item number 11A, which is our part-time wastewater three plant grade three, so I will hand this over to city manager.
Great. So we have had a posting for a wastewater three now for a couple of months and have seen absolutely no replies. In fact, I got permission from the state to get every wastewater three email in the state and email the posting to everybody.
Damn.
And I got a response and said, I love that one here. And that's it.
That's all he said?
That's all he said. And then eventually we've got a gentleman who is retired as a wastewater, you know, chief plant operator from Chico and he is working half-time as a, you know, this is a technical term, practice plant operator, U County, for the community college. And he's offered to come up here and work twice a week and act in the stead of PACE. And for the total cost, in his letter remotely, for total cost for the year of $44,000. And if you compare that to PACE, which is doing the same thing, the bill for PACE for the same period last year was $127,000. And so.
So that's more than 44.
Just a little bit more. But so the guy, I've got his wastewater three certificate, I've got all his information, it all checks out. He's been up here, he's met with plant operators, he's very familiar with our equipment, he's willing to take on that role. I don't think that, well, first of all, the state and I've got a writing for PACE that this satisfies requirements. I would prefer to have a full-time wastewater three onboard, but until we have enough money to retract somebody, I think this could be a stopgap measure.
Thank you. Council member, has a question?
Our staff likes to die.
So let me put it this way, they think that he's competent. I think that we're walking into, you know, a strange current relationship in the wastewater department. And I think the idea of having somebody walk in and instantly become the person in charge, I think I can sense a little discomfort about them, but they agree that he's completely competent and this gentleman has agreed to mentor one of our folks towards passing the wastewater three.
That's great. I've heard that rumor somewhere.
That's great.
Are there any other questions for right now before we move into public comment? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Anyone who would like to come and speak on this item, has three minutes.
Hi, Paris Patrick again. And so question, if there is somebody who is interested in that position, can they still come and apply?
The requirement to apply for the position is having the wastewater three certificate in hand.
Correct.
In terms of coming in, like we spoke about before the meeting, come on in and let's have a discussion and we can get on the right track and whoever gets to the wastewater three certificate first and wants to work in this city for, you know, the pay that we've advertised, that's great.
Oh, I guess what I was specifically saying is if you are hiring for this year for the $44,000, does that mean that this is closed for the year? I guess that's what I was trying to say.
No, I believe this.
It is a purely stopgap measure and it is at well-employed, no benefits, it is purely a contract relationship.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item for tonight? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and move into discussion. Is there any discussion on the item or any motions?
I would like to thank you guys for putting that out. Email every one of them in the state of town. You know, I appreciate that. Any more discussion? I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, yes. The motion, the recommendation posits an either or, approve the hiring of a part-time wastewater three operator or continue utilizing PACE's services. PACE's services are extraordinarily expensive.
And they don't want to do it.
And they don't want to do it and the state doesn't want them to do it. On the other hand, I've enjoyed being part of the regional water action group and it was one of the consultants to that group. When I asked, the city of Dunsmere has this intractable problem and they said, well, here is the report from Paul Rose that suggests that the city of Dunsmere and the city of Mount Chasta, both of who discharge their sewage into the upper sack, that in his professional experience as a grade five operator, it makes a huge amount of sense for the two cities to work together to co-fund the position. And moreover, he would help us find the funds to pay for the position because there's any number of sources of funds available. So I'm happy to go with what is purely stopgap and not the most ideal resolution, but I'd like the city to direct the city manager to work with his counterparts in the city of Mount Chasta to see if there is a better solution based on the Rose report that I've forwarded to the mayor and the city manager.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Well, I, you know, I don't want to take away from someone else's motion, but if this is our incremental progress, I think the better path is to work venture with the city of Mount Chasta and have a consultant looking for funds to relieve both communities.
Okay. Council member Bush?
Yeah, I would say that something the way that both the finance director and the city manager approached this, that this is simply just a stopgap and then all kinds of other options will be explored going forward. So with that in mind, I move that we adopt. How do you want to put this?
Can I, do you want to go for it? Yeah, let me try to make everybody happy. I want to make a motion, Madam Mayor, to hire the part-time wastewater three operator to replace PACE until a permanent fix can be found, with the modification to this paper here to instruct city manager or staff to research the possibility of co-meeting whatever with Mount Chasta to share a wastewater three on the recommendation of Paul Rose's report that Mr. Arf has submitted to both the mayor and the city manager. How does that sound to you, sir?
Excellent.
How does that sound to you, sir?
Good, why don't you go ahead and second this?
All right, there's a motion in the second. Julie, I hope you got all that. Is there any other discussion on the motion at hand that has not been set yet? Seeing none, we will move into a roll call vote. Council member Deutsch, have you voted?
Aye.
Council member Kaiser?
Aye.
Council member Arf?
Aye.
And myself as an aye, motion carries. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to staff for at least finding an $84-ish thousand solution.
Really, what, they just wrote back, you have it up there and that's it?
That's it?
Oh my gosh.
All right, we will now move on to item 11B, which is review of committee appointments. Knowing that council member Brian is not here, I would not, I would advise against making any formal motions tonight until we get him here, but we can have the discussion. Right now, we just have questions and then we'll move into public comment. Any questions on the appointments?
Well, I guess if you can leave with what is the process, we have handed out our listed committees. As far as I know, the only commission function, excuse me, the only committee functioning is finance. The airport occasionally, but that's pretty much.
Yeah, well, we're looking at the airport being that hot because there's a meeting for a monthly meeting for that.
So we're looking at a number of ad hoc, get the job done, standing committees. I do think if we're still talking about this in May or June, we're not doing a very good job.
So the other thing is, is we do have other outside agency assignments, if anyone would like to switch so we can have that discussion. And I'll just review these for the members of the public court here. So city council members sit on a number of different committees, which include Brown Act committees, which are formal with resolution. There's a couple of these that have not been formalized. So economic development and tourism, which is council member Brian and Deutsch, I don't believe that committee is meeting and has not formalized a resolution.
Yeah, I thought the other.
Public facilities and services was advertised and I know we discussed, due to the lack of individuals wishing to serve on that committee, it may be disbanded and become special project assets where needed. Airport, we are discussing a resolution to create an ad hoc to assist the city manager with functions of the airport. Trails and recreation, we've kind of just been working on that on the side, so.
Yeah, but they don't call us back.
I know. So again, that committee has not been formalized.
If I could on that, I want to reiterate that former mayor Kathy Porter from Mount Chasta had said that she wants to connect up with Dunsmere and work on trails together, so.
Yeah, she is stepping out of the trip partners now.
She is?
Yes, so that's another thing. And council member Kaiser, when I did go to one of the meetings that they had and it seemed much more Mount Chasta focused and that's why we kind of stopped going, because they weren't interested in us as much. And so for ad hoc committees, we have protocols and solid waste sewer rate study committee, those both probably should be disbanded at this point since they completed their documents. So we'll take those off.
Well, the only question on that though is whether or not we want to take that solid waste and turn it into a committee, an ad hoc committee that would work on the.
It could. So what we're working on with solid waste and green waste, just to cover that really quick, and I apologize for cutting you off, we just got emails today. So Mount Chasta just finished their franchise agreement and the 218 study for their solid waste to meet the new state mandates. And so Muriel Torrell, thankfully, the finance director up there gave the contact information from a consultant who did that. And so city manager, he passes in a consultation with that individual because their 218 and solid waste took into account all of the new changes for the state and that's something we probably should look at. So maybe there will be a recommendation for an ad hoc, but I don't think that there's an ability to give a recommendation yet.
Well, as referred to as Clemens, the contract Clemens, is that something that would fall into an ad hoc or do you want to do it after all of that work?
So it's in process. Clemens has been contacted and the gentleman I contacted with this person usually represents solid waste policy. In this case, they are going to work with the solid waste policy, they know what we need to accomplish and they know what our goals are and they're going to have some discussions and then we're going to get together and try to figure out what costs are. There's going to be a lot of negotiations in between, but this person is acting as go-between on these discussions. Now with the new rules in place, because of the size of our community, I think it would be prudent to move right now towards meeting those goals, but given the size of the community, we don't need to meet that standard until 2026. But, and this is nothing to count on yet, but we have a concern in town that has tied up a number of properties and for cannabis-related businesses, including some work up at the airport, and they have proposed to build and manage a green waste facility as part of a goodwill gesture to the community. And they lived up to all their promises up to this point, but it's nothing to count on, but something to keep in the back of our minds.
So I guess, I think once we get more and more information, we might come back with an ad hoc or we might stay with just the city manager, the consultant. So I think.
We're going to want an ad hoc on that.
Probably, but.
Yeah, on here.
So we'll probably come back with that at a later date. I don't think we can draft up a resolution tonight for consideration. Outside agency assignments, the CDVG loan committee is council member Brian. Lola is typically the mayor and mayor pro temp, who sits on the mayor's selection committee. That's pretty straightforward. Irwin is council member Arf, so unless he wants to switch out or get that one up, that's up there. Score is the city manager and our CFO, Link. Neighborhood watch, I know, has kind of stagnated. I think we'll keep this on there unless.
Yeah, that's a B plan, just keep it there. Hopefully after the Aprilia Tito event, we can get some more.
That's right, okay.
But if not, I think that's switch that up to you.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. You ran it, did a really good job.
So once we get through public comment, we can go through and make changes. I'm just reviewing this for the general public. I'm just reviewing this for the general public. We do not have a LAFCO member, which is the local agency formation commission, as for people who are involved in annexations. We do not have a member on that. Those have to be appointed by the mayor's selection group at the Lola dinners. Thank you. Siskiyou County Local Transportation Committee. Again, appointments are made by Lola for that. I believe Councilmember Deutsch, are you on there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. So Regional Integrated Waste Management Council, I go to those. And then Councilmember Arth is on there.
We did have those.
They only meet twice a year, so it's not like they get to meet very often. And it's usually kind of depressing, I think.
I'll make sure I own this.
I mean, it basically, it's basically a meeting of all the solid waste haulers and solid waste people and all of us talking about how we can't meet our state mandates. Yep, that's basically what we do.
Mayor, can I have a run for a second?
Yeah.
I just noticed that we have two folks that are sitting here that may want to leave. Is that something we may want to consider if they want to?
If you, if you'd like.
Oh, I appreciate that, but.
Yeah, we'll stick around.
Okay.
It's, you know, there's some issues you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the, we appreciate it.
Yeah. So Dunsmere, just to finish up, the other outside agencies, the Dunsmere Parks and Recreation Board, which we appoint individuals.
Chris Langston moved.
Okay, so it's just a correction on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we have a Chamber of Commerce liaison, which is Councilmember Deutsch. And then the Collier Interpretive and Information Center, the CISC, is also Councilmember Deutsch.
Yeah.
So just for the information, before we move into public comment and discussion, those are the things that are here. Any other clarifying questions? The only other, I think the only thing we've decided is we will probably have a solid waste ad hoc coming up. That that's not really up for discussion tonight.
Right.
Councilmember Arth, questions? Before I move into public comment?
I, I, I'm making one offer.
Okay.
I'm, I'm willing to put this whole matter over to a meeting of the vice mayor as well and president. If we could give Supervisor Valenzuela five minutes to talk about his notion of regional green waste solutions. Because that will inform my decision on what I want to do this year and next year.
Well, unfortunately, green waste and regional green waste is not on the agenda. And we're talking about committee appointments. And we have talked about solid waste becoming ad hoc at maybe a next agenda. I apologize to our board of supervisors that it's not on the agenda. And I don't want us to get off topic on an action item that's not actionable.
But if he just chose to get up as a member of the public and talk about green waste?
If he wants to get up and talk about committees.
Could I just, could I just quickly state that I am working on a green waste program? I think we will be trialing again this year, Earth Day week, a low-cost green waste program. The goal is to build on that for spring, fall, and then ongoing, continue. But, you know, it's a small step as we are doing. But I'm very confident we will have a green waste program trialing again this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. I'm going to go to public comment. Would anyone like to publicly comment on committee appointments? Stay on track. Seeing none, we'll move into discussion. It sounds as though Councilmember Arth would like to now table this at the next meeting. This gives us something to talk about, and there's a second there. So I would, I would strongly urge the council members to review what's currently on here. I will say, I think at least action that we can take tonight is to remove the committees that have finished, which is our protocols, ad hoc, our solid waste study committee. And then to correct the Neighborhood Watch council member assignment to, from Kaiser to Deutsch. And then to remove Chris Langston from the Dunsmere Park and Rec Board just due to some clerical stuff.
Do you have your person on there for that, or your members?
We appointed.
Ellen McHern.
Ellen McHern.
Is she on there?
Yep. Or she, she's not on, then she should be updated.
Yeah.
All right. So seeing no other discussion, there's a motion to table to the next meeting in a second. Although in favor of this, you might not say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. We'll now move on to item 11E, which is Senate Bill 998, discontinuation of water service. Boy, we can wait.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. As I was sitting here thinking about bringing this subject up, I am glad that Sheriff Captain Sergeant Westman are here. I just do want to point out that if citizens come in and inhibit the operations of city business or are disruptive or being unfair to our staff, sheriffs will be called and that individual will be dealt with. So I just want to mention that as a discontinuation of service policy, sometimes there are some folk that do not appreciate it and want to make it voiced to city staff. So I just want to make sure that our city staff feel comfortable, confident. And I want the public to be very aware that sheriffs will be called. Thank you. All right. Senate Bill 998 is a Senate bill from the state of California that wants to adhere to certain guidelines and wants to establish a policy. So this Senate bill is just to establish a policy of discontinuation of residential water service. Okay. So a few, there's a, it's a whole big policy. It's in the packet. The, or the Senate bill is in the packet. I also have the policy that I have created back here as well. So few key points that I wanted to show. Water system cannot discontinue residential water service until the customer is delinquent for at least sixty days. Okay, but in this policy, we get to determine when the delinquency period starts. Okay, so we can get into all this and more, all our questions. All right, then next, a water system must notice the customer seven days prior to the discontinuation. Again, there's multiple facets with that notice. We can all get into. The last thing I just, both point I wanted to point out was that the reconnection fee, no matter if the water is turned off or not, the reconnection fee is fifty dollars for normal operating hours and a hundred and fifty dollars for after hours. So if somebody gets turned off and they call on a Saturday, they need to realize that if they want the water turned on back, even water turned on then, a hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that our policy or is that what you're managing?
So this, the fifty dollars and the hundred and fifty dollars is now instituted in Senate Bill 998.
Yeah.
You said regardless of, my water's on. But you're saying it's disconnected. But it really isn't disconnected. But now you're going to charge me a hundred and fifty on a Saturday to turn it back on. But it is on. It's what you said, regardless if it's on or not.
Regardless if, if the crew goes out to physically discontinue actual waterfall.
So they ain't been there yet. Your crew ain't been to turn me off yet. I'm still on, but you're charging me on Saturday. Okay, let's just say it's Friday. It's going today afternoon. It's still fifty bucks, even though it's not off. It's still a fifty dollar turn-on fee because I didn't pay my bill.
Plus whatever you owe on the bill for the sixty days.
Correct.
Okay, so if I don't pay my bill for two months, seven days before to two months is a, you'll give a notice that we're turning you off.
We make call. But there will be a notice. So the notice could be a phone call or a mailed letter or a placement at the residence.
I just want to be perfectly clear how it's going to go down. So I'm going to reiterate for both of us.
Perfect.
If you don't pay your water bill for two months, then they're going to charge you a fifty dollar reconnect fee plus what you owe. If you get turned off and you come into city hall yelling at staff, you're going to get the cops called on you. So be nice to city staff.
And pay your bill.
And pay your bill.
Senate bill does not refer to the sheriff's call, but.
Okay, well.
And just to clarify, so the sixty day is actually a thirty day extension from what we normally do right now, correct?
Uh, not quite. It's about a fifteen day extension. Currently, right now, where we discontinue at about forty-five days. So that extends it from forty-five to sixty days. So to be a little more specific too, I mentioned delinquency period. The delinquency period is established on the first of the month. So while people may think that they are delinquent, right when they get their bill, the terminology, doesn't matter if you want to be called that you are delinquent or not, the delinquency period starts on the first of the month. So even if you don't receive a bill on the first, and it comes on the second or the third, or the thirty-first, or whenever the bill physically gets to the customer.
It's the last first.
The delinquency period will start on the first of the month.
But you'll notice that, that they're in the delinquency period?
No.
Okay.
Delinquency period is established the first of the month.
Of the month you're in, not next month.
Delinquency period begins on the first of a month.
After the day.
Nope.
No.
No. Delinquency period starts on the first of the month, okay? Then sixty days later, if that amount is not paid, then water can be discontinued.
What did, I made this all straighter is, what does the bill say to do, the bill is due?
Okay, so a bill is generated around the first of the month. Ninety-nine sixty-three is a typical bill.
But I mean, what does the date say? What does the date say? What is due?
It is, it is, there is a late payment penalty of ten percent that is established on the twenty-sixth of the month.
So you have to pay on the twenty-fifth.
So you, if you don't want to pay a penalty, you're required to pay between the first and the twenty-fifth.
Okay. So rather than receiving the bill, you've got about three days to pay, correct?
Without receiving the penalty, correct.
And that's currently how we do it.
That's current how we do it, and that is still established.
So just to clarify, so if I pay on the twenty-fifth, then I'll be charged at ten percent?
Yep.
And then if the next first comes around and I get the next bill, how long do I have until I get my water shut off?
You have sixty days until shut, until water shut off.
From the twenty-fifth?
From the first.
From the first, okay. That's going to be very confusing for me.
It's, it's a constitutional policy.
I mean, yes, pay the bill, but some of us have irresponsible spouses who don't pay their bill. Which has happened. But I, I think it's important for people, especially, in actual series now. Yeah, he doesn't read things. But it's really important to be very clear on that because especially as someone who's moved a lot, it, it gets very confusing if you're moving from one place to another and what bill is still due and what, when can I start my service? I think that's going to be very critical that we're very clear with people and at least patient with people that, you know, those things are going to happen. And especially if we have a higher amount of low-income individuals who are possibly working multiple jobs, moving more often than typical other moderate to higher-income individuals. We need to definitely be very clear about that. Because obviously, we're not understanding very clearly what's going on.
Yep.
And we're a nice cross-section of the different types of individuals who live here.
Yeah, this is perfect. This is great.
So you shouldn't need a master's degree to figure out what the hell's going on with your bill.
Yeah.
But anyway, sorry, I digress. Are there any questions before I go into public comment? I believe this is an information-only item. So you're not looking for any direction at this point?
I am not.
I will most likely give one after public comment. But do you have any questions before I go?
Comment, you go. Well, based on what I've heard so far, is it correct to say that the current policies and tariffs or contractual relationships between our customers and our water operation, are they in compliance with this legislation? Or are they not in compliance with this legislation? With the notion it has notice requirements, it has a special provision for low-income customers, it has a sixty-day guarantee. Are we in compliance or not?
What was the question? I mean.
The question is, if I voted the website at City of Dunsmere, will I see a termination policy for residential water service that satisfies all the provisions in this law or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you will. And we're bringing this up early so we have the opportunity to notice the public on it. And the debate on this going into effect was supposed to be February 2nd. But given the size of our community and who we report to, we're giving until April 1st or 2nd. But we're putting it into place sooner. But we wanted to give enough time to notice the community and get it up on our website.
No, but are you noticing changes or no changes?
This will definitely change how we argue.
So our current policy, well, prior to February 1st, the policy was we shut off at forty-five days, which would not adhere to Senate Bill 998.
And if you're a person of lower, if you're a person of lower income, do you get a break?
No, there's no breaks because then it's a user.
But there is, but there is in the law.
Well, there, so I think what you're referring to is deferred or reduced payments.
Yes.
We can't offer that. There's no factor in which we can offer a reduced payment for this customer that doesn't affect this customer.
I referred all, that's what I was going to bring up in my comments. So while we're on, what I was going to say was that from the standpoint of everyone wishing to be able to address the needs of people who are on limited income, the Prop 218 process says that we cannot do that as a city. The only way that it would be possible for there to be some sort of program in the city to help those people would be if it came from an outside agency or an outside group that raised funds to be able to support that. That's what Prop 218 says. You cannot, as Mr. Kaiser said, charge one person less for the same service than the other one.
And this is where you and I disagree. As the author of lifeline legislation that helps poor people afford these essential services, if the California legislature and the governor say you give a break to poor residential utility customers, we don't, does the city say, no, thank you?
So before we go back into discussion, I'm going to look into public comment. Is there any public comment on the discussion on Senate Bill 998, knowing that this is an information-only item for council? Seeing none, we'll now move into discussion. Please continue.
Well, I, I would, you know, if the staff sort of says, here's the bill, which is now a law, it was enacted in 2018. And I would expect to see a new City of Dunsmere policy that assures everybody we are following this law. And that it is posted on our website. And that maybe if we did a hailing with the utility bill to let customers know their new set of rights, that would be a good thing.
Fantastic. So the policy that I did write is on our website currently right now. It does have to be required in five other languages. So this policy is currently on our website as of February 1st. It was on there. In trying to adhere to the February 1st deadline, which may or may not be, or which is not the case for us, but we're doing that. So that is in fact established. But as Councilmember Arth has pointed out, there are many other aspects, facets to this bill.
It's a law, it's not a bill.
Or in this law, deferred and reduced payments, payment schedules, even the inability to shut off for, you have to meet three requirements. All three of them have to be met. So again, there's, there's many facets and intricacies to the law.
Are we in compliance with?
So as of right now, the policy is on the website.
Which does make us.
You didn't answer the question.
Which makes us in compliance.
Okay.
With the established policy.
What he's saying, we don't offer a lifeline. We don't offer a disadvantage if you're, if you're.
We cannot offer reduced payments. There's no, there's no mechanism for that currently.
There's no mechanism for that for the city, for any city, for any city, right?
Well, I, I think other cities have nonprofits established or some other type of way in which the individual user, each of those users still charge the same amount. But there's some outside, non-enterprise entity that is able to offer a reduced for such and such cases. That's what I've been saying, Arth.
That, that is not what the law says. The law talks about us as a municipal provider. It doesn't talk about nonprofit groups.
Yeah, but we can't give.
We can't.
This, this is fiction, like we can't inspect buildings. So. So if the city attorney agrees with whatever this view is, I'd like to see it. What I want is to be in compliance with state law and help the poor parts of our community.
I want to help people who don't do, but I don't want to get sued by Ms. Smith because she wasn't there.
So going back.
So there is, there is a plan for deferred or reduced payments. So even there, we can choose deferred or reduced. So we have a plan for this. The plan for deferred is that you can defer your payment up until seven days prior to the 60th day. So like 53 days, you can, we, and the city already is in compliance with this. We've been doing this in the past Where somebody can say, I can't pay my 9963 right now. We say, when can you pay it? They say tomorrow, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Thank you for your call. Thank you for working with us. We appreciate it. We will see you on that date. If we do not see you on that date, we need to adhere to the current policy, which is a discontinuation. So we already offered deferred payments, so we're in compliance with that currently right now.
I think it just comes from your interpretation of the law. It's not the same as the interpretation of cities.
They say deferred, there's no reduced.
There's a huge gap between the guarantees given by state law and what our city is going to offer. And geez, no wonder people come in at the office being very upset at their utility services being terminated for non-payment. The point of this bill is to help them maintain their water service, an essential part of life. You've got one little box, I'm looking at your little box on page 29 in the Agenda Packet And it leaves out big chunks of the milk or law, as we prefer.
So if this is an information only, there's no action requested, I would.
You were going to make some comments.
I was just going to say if we're going to notice them, that they're going to get shut off to do more than one of the three options. But that's up to you.
I mean.
I, I would like, I would like to see a lockup of what the City of Dunsmere's policy is That comports with the provisions of this law reviewed by the city attorney. I'm not particularly aware of people's rights.
So again, this is an information only, so start that conversation. I would suggest that we put together your points and send them to city staff or the city attorney to review Because obviously there's a difference in interpretation and so I would strongly suggest that you do that. Councilmember Deutsch, did you have any?
Madam Mayor, I, I kind of have to, I kind of have to concur with Peter Art's request to have the city attorney look at it. Because if there is a way, we could.
There is a way.
So there are a number of ways that you.
There's a way, the way is to get somebody else to do it besides the city.
That's not what the law says, sir. That's what I was told.
Again, this is an information item only. You are not city senators or assembly members. So if you want to argue the language of the bill, I urge you to run for one of those two offices.
Law.
So.
But we are a city council member and we, we do have applied by the law and if there's a new bill.
Councilmember Deutsch, I'd like to go before you then.
My first experience with the city was five years ago when I was one of the members of the team That went through and did the water rate study. We spent over a year doing that. We had pace engineering leading and we had our city attorney involved in every step. We were told at every step of the way that you cannot give reduced rates to somebody based on anything. Everybody has to be treated the same. And what that means is that anybody that wants to come up and put together a nonprofit that raises money for those people, that is legal. But city itself, by Prop 218, cannot discriminate and give one person less than another. That's the way the law is.
He's right.
Thank you for your legal advice, sir. Well, it's advice that I've heard over years worth of time from all the people that knew what they were talking about.
Going back to the items.
Can I just add something to this? I will get my nose into this a little bit deeper and I will get a reading from John Kenny. I think that is completely fair.
Thank you.
Cool.
Great. Seeing no other action needed on this item, we'll move from item 11E to item number 12, which is future agenda items. A couple of things that have been mentioned tonight already is, is the historic district, solid waste ad hoc, Specifically to talk about the Clemens Contract and green waste and then bringing back that airport ad hoc resolution. Did I miss anything, gentlemen?
No.
No, holding the state here, the Chair of Finance was here. The Finance Committee has set a very aggressive schedule for a two-year budget effort That will require this council to make a number of decisions in the next 60 days If we are going to adopt a budget by July 1st, 2020. So the war we temporize on elephants in the room and Clemens Contract and so on, It makes the budget process that much less good.
Okay, any other items for future agenda that I missed, gentlemen?
Well, I do want to bring up, it, it kind of struck me as I was talking before about five years ago And that is five years ago, we started the process for a five-year plan for the water rate study And that plan was enacted in 2016, so we're on the calendar now. We've started the process over again for the next five years. I don't know when we want to start that off, but we're in that realm now where we want to take a look at what we're going to do for the next five years with the water rates.
Okay, I will leave that to the city manager and our city engineer.
Sure, just wanted to throw it out there.
Thank you for bringing that to attention. All right. Seeing no other items, we'll move ourselves to item number 12 to item number 13, which is adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Before I say aye, I would like, again, thank Edna Swedler for coming. I'd like to thank the sheriffs. John, thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Right.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries, we adjourn.